Good evening. This meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, just a few points of order. This is very nice to see so many faces here this evening. In the back corner, you'll find agendas and yellow public comment cards. So if you'd like to speak this evening, please go ahead and grab a yellow card. There's two opportunities to speak. First, we have some presentations. And if I can start off with Bunker Hill Middle School's presentation, The Eagle Scout Project. We can do Cabra- let's, let's, we'll change the order. Thank you for that. So we're going to start out. Mike Distillio, Principal of Bunker Hill, will be presenting the middle school presentation for Cabrera's PAC. Mike?
Thank you, Ms. Chilla. My name's Mike Distillio, the proud principal of Bunker Hill Middle School. Before I start, I'd like to just call my people up if they would like to stand with me. I'd like to ask Paul, Ava, Aston, Julian, Julian, and Callie to come up and, and stand with me because they're part of the presentation. So tonight, I have the pleasure of talking about Cabrera's PAC. And this is highlighting some positive behavior and intervention strategies that Mr. Cabrera does in his eighth grade Spanish class. Mr. Cabrera, he can't be here tonight, but for a good reason. He's actually mandated tonight to attend a webinar for an upcoming professional development summit. Mr. Cabrera and his colleague, Ms. Ducas, both Bunker Hill teachers were selected by the NJA to attend a summit in San Francisco that's actually championed by the NEA. And this is actually going to help instill some training to help support students. It's also helping them become educational ambassadors with foundational work for advocacy and for the work with minoritized populations and creating an inclusive environment in the school where they work. And that definitely benefits Bunker Hill. So the come, the summit consists of some rigorous professional development. So consequently and regretfully, Mr. Cabrera had a conflict tonight. But nevertheless, I wanted, thought it was important to convey the promise of the workings of Mr. Cabrera's PAC. So it started based on the concept of what it means to be a Bulldog. And Dr. Gregor just flipped the slide. But basically, in every single classroom at Bunker Hill, we have this mantra. And everything we do goes back to these two things. So the first one is that we respect all of those around us and we realize we're all connected. And no one, regardless of title, age, experience, ethnicity, gender, identity, talent, appearance, or religion, is better than the other. We're all connected in that way. And then also that a life of purpose is one that's rooted in the service of others and that at Bunker Hill, we give of ourselves fully so that the person next to us has a better go of things. So Mr. Cabrera actually uses this idea to showcase the PAC and unify, show unity in his classroom around this singular goal. So tonight, we have six students. We have Callie, we have Callie, we have Aston, we have Ava, we have two Julians, Julian and Julian, and we have Paul. And tonight, they're going to kind of talk about what Cabrera's PAC means to them. At first, I'm going to introduce Callie, who's going to give you an overview. And then Aston will speak and we'll go forward after that. So, Callie?
Cabrera's PAC is an initiative Mr. Cabrera, our Spanish teacher, started earlier this winter as a way to include his students as well as offer a reward system for actively showing certain traits and behaviors. He also spotlights members of the PAC with a class captain role. The idea came after he began brainstorming ideas to ensure all of his students felt like they were part of a family even while being in school. I will now pass it off to Aston Riccardi to discuss the requirements of being a PAC member.
The requirements of being a PAC member? You have to maintain an average of a C or higher in class. Then you cannot get suspended from school because of behavior issues. Not having, not having more than three teacher detentions in a market period is also requirement of being in a PAC. And not getting involved and found guilty in a case of bullying is the last requirement of being in the PAC. Thank you.
So I was, um, I'll be introducing the responsibilities of the PAC members. The first responsibility is maintaining good grades in the Spanish classroom. And then the second responsibility is to assist, encourage, and respect other PAC members. And then the third is to always respect and follow the directions of the PAC leader, Mr. Cabrera. And if a remem- but, uh, a member isn't able to fulfill the responsibilities of the PAC, he'll be removed from the PAC and his or her name will become, um, will be removed off the wall. And eventually, he or she will have the opportunity to rejoin the PAC within three weeks of no further disciplinary referrals.
Hi, I'm Julian. I'll be talking about the rewards of the PAC. Some rewards are all PAC members are entitled to one treat a week. All PAC members will enjoy one Friday, one fun Friday once a month. And all PAC members are treated like family.
Hi, I'm Paul Balak. I'll be talking about the responsibilities of a captain. When you're a captain, you lead the class when the teacher is absent. You provide a report to the teacher as far as class behavior. All PAC members must report to the captain if any behavior issues.
Hi, I'm Julian Robinson. I'll be talking about the benefits of having a PAC. Ever since we adopted the ideas of the PAC, we have seen a significance, improvements in student behavior and performance. There has not been any disciplinary referrals or detention since the implementation of the PAC.
And if you could go to the next slide, Dr. Gregor? These are, these are some of our stellar individuals. These are all six of them. And I'm, I'm so proud of them because they're not just talking about the PAC. They actually live and breathe every aspect of the mantra of Bunker Hill. So I'm incredibly proud of them. We do have a video that they made, so hopefully we can kind of hear that. I believe it's on the next slide. So there's also an individual in here named John. John, John is doing a lot of talking in here. But this is Callie kind of talking about the PAC. I don't know. That was Mr. Cabrera's PAC. I don't, um, but I know the, the video probably didn't work. But just again, want to say thank you to these six, eight, sixth, eighth graders. They're going to do something great at the high school, I know. I saw Mr. Anderson here just a bit ago. You're going to love having these Bulldogs at, at your school. So thank you, everybody, and I want to give everybody a great round of applause.
Thank you all. If you could just say right, if you could just, if you could all just remain standing. I'm sorry, we just have some certificates.
Well done, guys. There's a lot of people in this room. Well done.
Good job, everyone. Good evening. I'd like to present certificates of recognition for the participants in the class first. Reads, "In proud recognition of your presentation to the Board of Education as a member of Cabrera's PAC, we applaud your participation in the program that encourages and rewards positive student behavior in the classroom and for embracing an expectation of conduct and success." Now first, we have Ava Harris. Congratulations. Paul Balak.
Yeah.
Is that Balak? Sorry, buddy. Aston? I'm going to butcher that one, too. Julian Robinson? Julian one. Julian Torres? Julian two. We got Callie. Tara Brawley? And then finally, I know Mr. Cabrera is not here, but we have a certificate of recognition for him that reads, "In proud recognition of your presentation to the Board of Education on your program Cabrera's PAC, we applaud your approach to effectively encourage and reward positive behavior in your classroom by fostering student ownership, accountability, and achievement. Your efforts have bolstered your students' confidence, engagement, competence, and success." And as for Frank Cabrera? Do you get this, Tom?
I will. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Distillio, if you could please, we're going to do the Bunker Hill Middle School presentation for the Eagle Scout Project next.
Yep.
Yes, wonderful.
You got it. So it is my continued pleasure to introduce Sana Meta, if Sana can come up with me. I've had, I've had the fortune of having a strong connection with many of the current Scouts. Several years ago, I was a scout leader myself. And about four years ago, a recent graduate, Will Shuck, you might know that name. He did his Eagle project at Bunker Hill. He revamped one of our courtyards. And he created a gathering space that was ADA compliant and that was outdoors for children to eat, to play, to have, you know, events, especially with our specialized population, then came in really handy in 2020 and 2021 for obvious reasons. Sana graduated Bunker Hill last year, and she's constantly a Bulldog for life. And she wants to do something very similar. And she wanted to revamp the second courtyard at Bunker Hill. This one for a more academic purpose. And so what Sana is going to present to you, it makes me proud. It makes all, it makes everybody proud. She embodies the mantra of a Bulldog that we showed you a little bit earlier. And most importantly, she's a role model for every single person that comes after her. Sana is, I think, the first, right? The first female Eagle Scout that Washington Township is going to produce. So this is a really big deal. So I'd like Sana to kind of present her, her proposal to the board.
Thank you very much. Um, well, as you heard, my name is Sana Meta, and I am a scout. And I'm going to be doing an Eagle Scout project on, as you heard, Bunker Hill Middle School. And I'm going to be renovating the courtyard to make it an outdoor learning area. Thank you. So I'm currently Life Scout, and I'm pursuing my Eagle, which needs a, a community service project. As I said, mine is at the courtyard. So I graduated Bunker Hill in 2022, and I will graduate Washington Township High School in 2026. I've been in Scouts for five years, and I was the first girl to be a scout in Washington Township and hopefully the first Eagle Scout. So I plan to take it, the underutilized courtyard of Bunker Hill, and turn it into a place where kids can learn outside, like they can go to outdoor classes, they can have more, more places to eat lunch, or they could even have, use it for recreational activities like movie nights. It would be at the school's discretion. So I was in middle school from fall of 2019 to spring of 2022. I went to school in person only 18 months out of those 30. But still, I joined clubs, made friends, and bonded with teachers. And yes, eventually, I look forward to waking up at 7:00 a.m. every single day. But then CDC and state requirements meant that we were wearing masks, changing classrooms, and social distancing. It was not as enjoyable. But I remember one courtyard, overgrown, buggy, with a couple of tables, and it was amazing. It was a much-needed breath of fresh air from the stifling classrooms and restrictions. My objective is to share the joy of a courtyard and the freedom I felt with others. So as you see, this is what the courtyard currently looks like, well, in the summer. And it's real, it's like kind of overgrown. The bushes are kind of protruding into the space where we have the classroom. And if you can see, that's where my mom's standing, holding ruler. That's where we are going to plan to have that outdoor classroom. So I would like to add tables. I like to paint the wall, add a path, and add an awning. So first, with the tables. So we decided to get these convertible benches. They can be transformed to the use that you want them to. They are $200 for each table, and I want to get about six tables. So as you can see, these are what they can be used for, like they can be made into desks, or you can put two together for tables and even benches. And they can just be arranged and transformed to the use of the school. So I'd also like to paint the wall behind a teacher area, if you want to call it, where someone would stand in front, or you can just put something there. I would like to paint it white, and so you can have a contrast to the multicolored bricks behind them. And so it's a 10-foot by 4.5-foot area. And I want to use these two paints to make sure that even during, with all the crazy weather, it still stays fresh. And this would cost about $108. I would also like to put a path from the entrance of the courtyard to the teacher area, as I said before. This is so that like, if you wanted to roll something out there or it's really muddy, you don't have to get your shoes all dirty. So as you can see on the top, the stepstone, that's the design and color for the brick I would like to use. It is 16 by 16 inches, and I would like to lay two of them side by side along. So there's enough space for walking. Whoa. And the area covered is about 120 square feet, and the total of the bricks will come to about $370. And to make sure that it's all safe and it won't come loose and it's easy to maintain, I would need these sands and bases to make sure that, and to make sure it's safe, as I said. And it would come to be about $410. I would also like, like to add an awning above the teacher, as I said, so that if it's too sunny, you can still see anything projected on there. Or if it's like rainy, you can still protect anything underneath. So this awning is 10 feet by three feet, or about that. And so the requirement for, or like a restriction is that if an awning comes out more than four feet, or four feet, you need to add poles to the ground. But it's only three feet, so you can just bolt it right to the wall and it is safe and fully fine. This one is $100. So this is just an extra picture. That's Bunker Hill. The front is where you can see the parking lot. An outline in red is the courtyard. Blue is where my mom was standing earlier, and that's where the outdoor classroom would be. This, the yellow, the highlight, highlight, highlighted in yellow is where the sun rises. And it was, so if, as it moves across, it should cover the area, the, like the whiteboard area almost, along with the courtyard walls pretty nicely. This is the estimated cost. They total up to about $3,000, and that's what I hope to fundraise. And talking about fundraising, actually, Voice Scouts of America requires Scouts to fundraise for their projects. This can either be like monetary or in-kind donations. That means either direct money from like the PTO or your community, or like physical, meaning that you can go to like Home Depot or construction store and ask for like materials for it. Or your time, for like, I would need late, like labor, kind of, to help make and put the project together. So I could ask like clubs of the school districts, I mean, schools in the school district, and also like my, my troop, or just people around the community and my friends who can just help me bring it together. So just wanted to let you know, like, the overview. So we started thinking about this project last year, early, and we thought that the courtyard was a good and realistic option. And then in August 2022, we got a Board of Education acknowledgement, and they've had their tentative approval almost. And then December 2022, 2022, we talked to the operations manager, Mr. Robert Schoenfeld, who made sure that it was feasible and doable, basically. Then today, I'm presenting this project to the Board of Education. And hopefully, I, I can get the approval. Then next month, end of March, I can start fundraising. I will get approval, hopefully get approval from the Garden State Council, then I can fundraise, and then hopefully start my work mid-2023. So with the renovations I will make, the awnings, the table, the painting, and the path, and also landscaping and making it beautiful, we can take this underutilized courtyard and make it into a beautiful and enriching environment for the students of Bunker Hill for years to come. So thank everyone for listening to my presentation. Thank you to everyone who helped me, and if you have any questions, please not hesitate to ask.
Sana, Sana, if, if anyone in the room or watching would like to make a donation to the project, should we just then contact Mr. Distillio at Bunker Hill, if anyone would like to do that?
Yeah, they could just contact Mr. Distillio, and that'd be fine.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much. It was awesome.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Great job.
Sana, can I have you come back up here for a minute, please? First off, this is a certificate of recognition from the Washington Township Board of Education, recognizing you. "In proud recognition of your presentation to the Board of Education on your renovation proposal to the Bunker Hill Middle School Outdoor Courtyard as part of your Eagle Scout Project. We are grateful that you have chosen to give back to your former school through a project that will both beautify the grounds and benefit countless students and staff." Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have Dr. Alexander, who will report out on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying mid-year report. Thank you.
Breaker, breaker. My checks weren't working. Good evening. It's late, but good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, we love engagement, right? So this happens twice a year, and we review our harassment, intimidation, and bullying report findings. We're going to go over that briefly. The board has had an opportunity to review some of the, they review reports every month. This is creating like a snapshot, something that you're able to see how we're doing, what's happening, and then the, what I've added was a so what? What are we doing about that within our schools? Okay. All right. It's hard, it's a glare. So the incidents that were reported, total investigations from July 1 to December 31 of 2022, were 24. The board affirmed them as them being full investigations, having only 14 founded, six unfounded, and four inconclusive. With that being stated, in that same report, founded and unfounded, the percentages, same numbers that you just saw, but in like a pie chart for our variations of learners and how we're looking at data. 54% of them were founded, while only 25% of them were not, were unfounded. So again, what I will also do is ensure that, because we're going through the slides at not maybe a speed that is comfortable for everyone, we'll upload that. You'll be able to view that on our website, okay? When breaking it down and looking at ethnicities, 10 of the cases were founded for students who are identifying as white, two for Asian, eight for multiracial, and six identifying as black. Locations, looking at the highest location is occurring in our classroom. Again, even enlarging this on the screen because there are screens and visuals, glasses, no glasses, know that you'll have access to this online. And I will make sure that you have my email contact. If you need me to send this to you in an email form so that you can have access to spend some time with it, I'm open to that as well. Again, just trying to make sure that we enlarge that. But our largest site was in the classroom, and our least site was outside. And so just a quick notation on our website, where we talk about HIBs and with the new anti-bullying rights, incidences that occur off of school grounds and that are impacting students in our schools are still cases that we are engaged with. So understanding that we do investigations if they happen off-site, but students are still impacted in our schools. So that's why you see as increased as inside of our classrooms, as wide out, widespread as in our community and/or in cyber world. Trends that are occurring, some are highest is race and ethnicity, while our least would be perceived weakness, as well as across the board, appearance by gender, identity, and ethnicity. And just a little clarity when you think about gender and gender identity. How, you know, if you are self-identifying, and it's a perceived motivating factor based on how you identify versus based on how you are looking at your gender and/or identifying that way as well. So there is a differentiation when it comes to identifying HIBs and allowing us to fine-tune that to be able to investigate appropriately. Additional trends that happened during the month of December, again, looking across the board as it relates to where the locations are, we did have an increase in our middle level, and we will talk about how we're supporting our middle school students. And seeing that there has been an increase, but that I attribute to now our anti-bullying rights or our HIB updates are done electronically. There's more access, there's more availability for you to report from a student perspective, a parent perspective, a staff perspective, to be able to upload that and cause our attention to, to be more keen to what our concerns are when it comes to bullying. And now we are really motivating our students, particularly in our middle school level, to see something, then you say something. And so you see that result and that conversation happening at a faster rate in our middle school level. As a whole, our HIB trainings and programs, snapshots across the board from As a whole, our HIB trainings and programs, snapshots across the board from our trainings and programs, and then what you will see is that that is only for that portion of the year that is occurring in our schools independently and as a district-wide. What I did notice, and I, and I made a comment today to one of our administrators, that we are doing a lot of work in our schools, but we're not capturing that in, um, our data. So I've made a commitment, and I've shared this with the board as well, that we're gonna have, uh, micro meetings, um, to discuss what is happening and ensuring that we're capturing every training, every conversation, every proactive, um, engagement that we have as it relates to anti-bullying that is occurring, so that in the next report out, you will see a difference as we are being more intentional about our conversations and capturing all that is occurring within our schools, and truly showing what is happening, um, between our staff along with, um, our students. Again, another, um, shot overall for trainings and programs, and again, this is, um, semi-annual, so you'll have the opportunity to see the next half in the next six months. Programs, again, so, um, how each one, we've completed eighty programs so far for that half of the year. Targeted populations, and a good highlight for our board, they will have, they have a mandatory training as well every year when it comes to HIB training, and so that will be captured as well. They have not had that yet as the new seated, um, board members have been placed, but they will have that and you will see that notated in the trainings for our district-wide initiative as well. So now, you saw the data, so what? What does that mean? Right? You're saying, hmm, let me hear you say, hmm. Gotta keep you awake, it's late, right? So what I was, what we were really responsive to, last year when we did our presentations, and board feedback was, this is great, we're seeing this data, what are we doing about this? What does this look like? How do we, um, then respond to the behavior? It's one thing to identify a HIB, to understand that it's happening, the bigger portion is how are we looking at to change behavior, create more, being more proactive, and really looking at changing the climate and culture of an anti-bullying space here in Washington Township Public Schools. So monthly, but what happened is, is the board reviews the data, they also get to see how many remediations have occurred, how many small groups of the alleged bully or the alleged victim have been engaged with, with their school counselor, how many restorative sessions have, um, been in place to restore relationships that were broken due to the incident that occurred. So every month, they get to take that takeaway to see a snapshot of how many HIBs occurred in a location, and then what were the remediations that were occurring. What we're adding, as I noted, as I mentioned before, there was an increase, um, during our middle level, and really thinking and having some thought partners at that level, we talked about, what could we do to kind of drill in, create a model, and really create, um, a more intensive space? And so for staff, they'll be, uh, receiving micro PD and supports of public service announcements to help staff feel empowered to, when they see something, they say something. They're able to report it directly onto our online, um, access point, and that we're able to, to get it immediately to be able to support our students. And then we spent a lot of time supporting our board, our staff, as well as parents with understanding the new anti-bullying rights, but what we need to do, what we're going to do, is support our intent versus impact for our students. Well, how do students understand, as our youngest students from kindergarten all the way up to twelfth grade, the new anti-bullying rights? It is updated and changed this year. We're spending time with them across our middle level first, to understand what this now means. What do our words mean? One, in our classrooms, as far as cyberspace, there's an, they might be an intention, but the impact could be harming and lasting. And so that's some time that we'll be spending with them during the spring. After that, we are also dedicating three assemblies across all three middle schools, um, to talk a little bit more as a family, um, as a bulldog, as a, as a panther or Razorback, to be able to have that opportunity across the board for our middle level, again, setting the tone and the model at this level, and then we can go up to the high school and down to our elementary schools, um, in months to come. And once the assemblies have completed, they'll be able to engage, um, in volunteering to be a bully stopper, and be an advisory board to our anti-bullying specialists to hear from students. What is occurring when, when, when they're, when a bullying act may be happening or a conflict, and really hearing the student's voice as to what is happening, what needs to be done, and they are part of the conversation. Super excited to center student voices in this conversation as a day-to-day, this is something that they are experiencing, and we want to make sure that we're including them in that conversation. So with that, that is your semi-annual report. Come back in the next six months, stay tuned.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Alexander. We are going to, excuse me, on the agenda, we have a presentation of the Parent Information Resource Center. We're gonna reschedule that presentation, and we're gonna move on to item number five, a motion to approve the employment contract for Dr. Eric Hibbs for the period commencing on May first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. So moved. Second discussion. All right, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Can you open it to the public on that? Mrs. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Galen Arrow?
Yes.
Mr. Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Sad?
Epstein.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Motion carries. At this time, uh, Dr. Hibbs, if you don't mind going to the podium and saying a few words, not to put you on the spot, we'll, we'll put you on the spot.
Hi, everybody. First off, this is my awesome family right here, so guys, give a wave. I have my awesome daughter Bella, Dominic, Sophia, and my wife Jen. We can talk about later how odd it is and people actually get to vote on you right in front of everybody. So, uh, my name is Eric Hibbs. I'm very proud to be here tonight. Uh, I live, uh, I live right around the corner. We live, uh, we go to Kingsway, please don't hold that against me. I will always be standing on the township side, even at Kingsway. Um, I'm super proud to be here. I've been in education for, this is my twenty-fifth year. So I started out in Southampton Township, which is in Burlington County, as an incredible fourth grade teacher, had a great experience. I taught fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. I was really lucky to get hired by Joe Sweeney in Runnymede to be a vice principal, and I was a vice principal, and then a principal. Uh, and then I actually went to become a director of curriculum in Mount Holly, and then a superintendent. And, uh, the way my pathway went is that my superintendent left and they looked at me and said, we want you, and I just said yes. And that was a long time ago, and it's, uh, it's really been a life-changing experience to, to work in that capacity with children and really try to do what's best for kids. So what you're gonna get with me is that, and I know that I only have five minutes, Carol threatened with a hook. I will always be respectful to you, I will always support our staff and our community, I will always try to do what's best for everyone. And we mentioned a little bit today about what we've experienced over the last three years, and probably been the hardest three years of, of memory, right? Just of everything that was weird and odd and we're in, we're out of school, and we had a lot of, um, a lot of unpopular decisions across the board that we had to really come together with and make the best of. And I think what it's taught me is that we have to make sure that, we have to always make sure that we're doing what we really feel is what's always best for the children, and I think that, that is really what we're always going to do. It's, it's all about the kids, it's, it's a community. I look forward to meeting everybody and meeting the community, the staff, the kids. I look forward to just being embedded in township, so I'm super excited to be here. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I can't wait to join you. You're gonna ask, when am I coming? That's a great question. Uh, I have a ninety-day, uh, clause in my contract that I can't give until tomorrow, so hopefully sooner rather than later, and I really, uh, I'm gonna be here all night, so if you wanna catch me afterwards and ask me lots of really hard questions, I'm here, um, and I'll be happy to do so. And if I don't know exactly what you asked me in this moment, you're gonna have to give me a pass in the moment, um, but I'll, I'll give you the best answer that I can in the moment, but what you'll always get is honesty from me, okay? So thank you so much, everybody.
We're just, we're just gonna take a quick five-minute break, just for some quick pictures and to allow your family to take a picture and, okay, so five minutes, guys, we're just
Kathy Carey, right? Kathy, if you wouldn't mind kicking us off, do you mind? All right.
Okay, so we have a lot of initiatives that we're launching this month, so I'm very excited to report out on these. In an effort to better service our ethnically diverse population of families who are enrolling students in Washington Township Public Schools who may have languages other than English, the district has launched a partnership with Albom Translation Services. Albom will allow district personnel to connect with families through on-demand or scheduled phone or video multi-language interpretation services. Allowing for language equity gives families immediate access to understandable and accurate information that will guide decisions on their children's education as growth is paramount. The technology will empower our teachers, support staff, and administrators to reach students and parents in multicultural communities, allowing for greater engagement, learning, and collaboration. Children of Washington Township residents who will be five years old on or before October 1st, 2023, well, per district policy, are eligible for the district's full-day kindergarten program and can be registered through the district's online registration portal beginning tomorrow, Wednesday, March 1st, 2023. Kindergarten classes will be housed at all six of the district's elementary schools. Beginning tomorrow, March 1st, parents are encouraged to visit the registration link on the front page of the district website at wtpss.org, where helpful tutorials will guide registrants through the registration process. Once families complete the paperless preregistration process, they will then receive instructions on creating a Power School account and can begin the full enrollment process online. Families who prefer to complete their registrations in person can certainly make an appointment with us at the link provided on the preregistration approval. Please see our website for the kindergarten enrollment documentation required of our Washington Township residents. Kindergarten snapshots will be scheduled upon the final approval of the child's registration. If you have any questions, please contact Matt Pacina in the District Registration Office at 856-589-6644, extension 6698, or via email at mpacina@wtpss.org. Think spring, think baseball, think Washington Township Night at the Phillies. Members of the Washington Township High School Student Council encourage community members to join in the fun on the 16th Annual Washington Township Night at Citizens Bank Park on Wednesday, June 7th, 2023. The Philadelphia Phillies will take on the Detroit Tigers. First pitch is scheduled for 6:05 PM. A portion of all ticket sales will benefit the WTHS Student Council. Tickets range from $10 to $28 and are located in the outfield, pavilion, and pavilion deck, based on availability. Purchase tickets online at www.phillys.com/wths and use promo code WTHS. The fun and friendship that has been fostered for a quarter century through the Washington Township Education Foundation will continue when the WTEF hosts its 26th Annual Golf Classic on Monday, June 26, 2023, at the White Oaks Country Club in Newfield, New Jersey. The outing will be hosted rain or shine. Registration and lunch will proceed at 12 o'clock PM shotgun start for the scramble-formatted outing. A two-hour open bar dinner and an award ceremony along with prizes and giveaways will complete the afternoon. All proceeds directly benefit the Washington Township Public Schools. Individual golfers can register at a cost of $125. Sponsorship opportunities, including $150 whole sponsorships, and special prices for corporate foursomes are available. To obtain a registration form or to secure additional information, please contact Classic Chairman Charlie Dowd at 856-534-4268, or via email at c dowd@wtpss.org. Our publicity chairperson, Jan Gill, at 589-6644-6550, or at jgill@wtpss.org. If you're interested in purchasing a whole sponsorship, please contact Kelly Gorski. The Washington Township Public Schools Department of Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging, or DEEP, is proud to organize an inaugural convening that will provide leading educators in New Jersey an opportunity to present their work in these crucial areas and to engage a meaningful dialogue on issues such as race, social justice, neurodiversity, women's health, disability, allyship, and other concerns currently at the center of equity discussion in the state's pre-K-12 education system. Attendees also have an opportunity to seek out various employment opportunities through a career fair that will coincide with the forum. The date is Saturday, April 29th, 2023, from 8:30 AM to 6 o'clock PM at the Washington Township High School. The event is free and open to students, faculty, staff, alumni, and community members. Please see our website for further information on the convening. And finally, and if you see our posters posted on the doors, you are welcome to check out our QR code. Excuse me. The district is proud and excited to launch our first Parent Information Resource Center, or PERC. The resource created just for our township parents will provide a wealth of multimedia supports for our parents to help with their children, to help their children with technology, curriculum, and instruction, social-emotional learning, and so much more. Mrs. Gerber, the Director of Elementary Education, and I want to recognize the efforts of the many district staff that contributed to the development of the PERC, but most especially the efforts of our District Technology Integration Specialist, Josh Hanlon, Liz Patel, Michael Otto, and Kathy Kuzniewski. At our next regular session, we will present the PERC, but in the meantime, a press release, social media posts, as well as a Township in 20 video will be released tomorrow to introduce you to the PERC and show you how to access and navigate the platform. The PERC will be continually changing as we add and update content throughout the year, so please be sure to check back frequently. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. All right, moving on to correspondence. Can I have a motion to approve the correspondence as listed?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes listed for January?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, old business. Any old business from the board?
I just want to shout out to the Black History Club at the high school. I attended their dinner theater, and I have to tell you, the children, the young adults, did an amazing job. The music was amazing, and it was just one of those nights that just was very pleasurable. I met a lot of really terrific people, and I just wanted to shout out to all of them.
Thanks, Eileen. Any other old business from the board? No? All right. We're going to open up to public comment. So I have Bill Connolly.
Good evening to the Board Administration. I want to start by saying that I appreciate the amount of time that board members are required to devote to this work and for no compensation. Although I have some criticism to share tonight, I am to temper that by reminding myself that yours is an extreme example of volunteer work. Administrators too must work tirelessly. We have some wearing multiple hats, especially when challenges like this issue with the bluest eye emerge and concerns are raised. So my goal tonight is to caution the administration, the board, about the path forward with book challenges, as some of the actions taken so far and some issues in policy and procedure are troubling from my perspective. So let me be clear. I agree with the decision at the January board meeting to remove the bluest eye from ninth grade, but I do not agree with how this was handled, and also have questions about the process filed for adoption in the first place and the procedures in place to deal with any future challenges. Before I elaborate, let me tell you about my background. I'm a retired New Jersey English teacher, English supervisor, and director of curriculum who had two children graduate from and have a very positive experience as students in this district. In addition, I myself have faced book challenges during my career, both as a teacher and administrator. Prior to tonight, I read all the board minutes, an agenda related to this issue, and watched hours of these meetings on YouTube. I will be sending an email to the board and to Mr. McGee with details of my concerns and suggestions, since the specificity cannot be covered in the five minutes I have, but let me provide an overview of my concerns. First, I think a solid process for reconsideration of instructional materials aligned with the American Library Association is in place. However, the decision to remove the book for the rest of the year only weeks after the formal complainant filed, that contradicts the timeline described in the process document. As has been the case for decades in this country, book challenges are often initiated by people who have not read the entire book. This process of citing page numbers and reading excerpts out of context is a low bar that has been set here, echoed by most, but not all, who have spoken about this book without having read all of it, and that includes the formal complainant. I encourage this board to educate itself on the history of book challenges so they can prepare for what may be next. Can Washington Township blaze new trails by requiring complainants to read an entire work before submitting a challenge? The process by which the bluest eye was approved in 2018 is not entirely clear, based on what is in the board minutes and agenda on the website, so I have more questions than answers. In addition, the fact that a complaining parent was told that an alternative book for her child was not possible was stunning to me. That is considered a common and best practice. Finally, the fact that the book was read during the pandemic was surprising, as that was a time of limited and inconsistent contact between students and teachers. Although teachers have been portrayed as villains by some speakers at these meetings, I believe that a caring, empathetic teacher can help students process and understand challenging content. Here's my professional opinion on the book. I read the entire novel before drafting my comments, and as a former teacher of English One Honors, I personally would not choose this book for the ninth-grade curriculum. While it's an easier read from a comprehensive standpoint than many of Morrison's other works, I would anticipate that the content would be difficult for some students. The bluest eye is not pornography. In my opinion, it's a powerful representation of some important yet challenging topics that I just think are more suitable for older learners. So again, let me be clear. I agree that this book is not a good selection for ninth grade, and I also agree with the decision to remove it from ninth grade. But the process for how the complaint was handled, the process by which books are added to the curriculum, and the procedures in place for future challenges merit, in my opinion, careful consideration by administration, teachers, and ultimately this board. To the best of my knowledge, this is the fifth month in a row that this board has been hearing about and discussing this book and this process. Although I am sure that you all hope it is the last, some members of the board have hinted that other books will be looked at, and while I'm not sure that is a threat or a prediction, you hired a new superintendent tonight. I do not know Dr. Hibbs personally, but I hope that this board and administration shows care and diligence in the months ahead so that Dr. Hibbs, as the new district leader, can be a part of this important process for the future of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa McNally?
Good evening. My name is Melissa McNally, and I have been a teacher at Hurfield Elementary School for 23 years. I'm here to communicate concerns at Hurfield regarding the ERi program, which is a special education program that services students with severe emotional regulation impairment in two classrooms with 18 total students. I would first like to mention that we at Hurfield have been working with our administration since September to try to address concerns. We have weekly ERi meetings where our child study team, guidance counselor, nurse, special area teachers, and ERi teachers meet with both our principal, Dr. Switzer, and our special education supervisor, Jessica Gondek, to address concerns such as scheduling, training, program planning, staffing, et cetera. While we appreciate the meetings, they've not brought forth change. This program has grown tremendously in a short amount of time, and unfortunately, there struggles have been many and the solutions have been few. More recently, I have begun documenting many of these concerns in writing to our administrators and have even met with Gretchen Gerber to voice our concerns. In our collaboration efforts, we often hear from our administrators that the primary challenges of properly supporting this program cannot be accomplished due to two types of human resource issues. One, we cannot hire instructional assistants. There just aren't any willing to do this type of job for that kind of pay. This is an incredibly difficult job, where on a daily basis you will be hit, kicked, possibly bitten, will have vulgar obscenities screamed at you, and will often have to chase eloping children out into the parking lot or the street. I can understand why at a part-time $14 pay rate and no benefits, one would be wiser to work at Target. It is my understanding that all of our district schools are struggling with this and in many cases are out of compliance due to the lack of assistant staffing. But being without these vital paraprofessionals causes significant deficiencies, and in a program such as this, students cannot succeed without this support. We are losing many assistants due to the working conditions, and most are receiving zero training for these very specialized positions. The second human resource issue cited by admin is the board's decision to reduce the number of denovie associates, but without replacing them with something comparable. Regardless of how anyone feels about denovie, if we are going to take trained bodies out of these rooms, we must replace them with another trained resource. And if we do not, this and other programs like it that were built on this support will fail. The challenges in ERi have been so great that we have lost multiple employees of the program and have had constant change of staff in the rooms, and with more staff on the very edge of leaving. We have amazing ERi teachers with a plethora of expertise, but no one is listening to them. We are so short-staffed that these teachers lose their prep daily, which I might remind you is a contract violation, for the betterment of the program and the students. But we are at a breaking point. This school district is literally saving millions of dollars by keeping these students in our own buildings, but we are not investing in what is needed for their success. One, there was not proper time and energy invested in assessing the needs of this program prior to its implementation. Two, at the start of February, we still had not taken any time to look at the other models in the county or state that have ERi programs despite our requests. Three, despite voicing for over five months that we are struggling and need help and strategies, the supervisor overseeing this program has never stepped foot in any of our specialty classrooms to observe our strife. When ERi students enter the inclusion setting for special area classes, we have not had any help in the room many occasions, with 26 students plus multiple ERi students, in some cases nearly 30 first graders, nine with IEPs, no special education teacher, denovie, or aide. We do not have any area to take, oh, five, I'm sorry, we do not have any area to take these students when they are escalated or in crisis. As you already know, we have major space issues at Hurfield. We, as a staff, expressed these concerns last year prior to the program being moved to Hurfield, and it's just frustrating that while our own teachers could see this coming and express this concern, it fell upon deaf ears. So instead of having privacy, these students lose their dignity and inherit the stigma that is every parent's worst nightmare. As they roll on our hallway floors and yell and scream vulgar and offensive language for hours on end, and our students should never be exposed to that on a daily basis. Please try to imagine what your elementary school experience would have been like if you witnessed police cars and ambulances outside of your school on multiple occasions, a staff member with a broken kneecap taken out in a stretcher, a child with a broken nose after an altercation, children hearing a constant stream of obscenities right outside of their classrooms, and students wrapped inside of mats for their own safety while other students pass by wondering if we're hurting them because they're screaming "Let me out," rerouting kids at dismissal because a student is in crisis and on the hallway floor kicking an adult repeatedly and screaming. In a time where kids need to feel safe and normal, more than ever, we are exposing them to anxiety and confusion. Our other special education programs are also suffering due to the ongoing issues in the ERi program. Our designated denovie behaviorist that would normally help our building-wide behavior plans and interventions is not able to do this work because they've been permanently pulled into the ERi program to try to fill the deficiency. Our elements program students and staff have been completely displaced and have no true learning space free of distractions because we added the two new classrooms of ERi to the building when we knew in advance we would not have the space. And our interventionists have been teaching students in the hallway corridor for the past five months, and our neediest learners are but 15 feet from ERi classrooms where they are distracted by the sustained screaming and seclusion techniques. Even our orchestra programs are affected, as they too do not have a designated teaching space. My question is to the board, what will it take to provoke change? Not in September, but now. We have endured this for nearly six months with promises of it getting better, and it hasn't. Please decide how we can invest in getting proper support in place now and begin making the changes that are needed. What is the timeline that we could expect to see that change? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Want to take that?
Yes, I do. Melissa, beyond today, I'll circle back with you with some staff that you have relative to that type of complexity and the things that you said would require my working back with you to deliberate on that, as opposed to having this conversation at a board meeting. We can agree to disagree, whether we should or not. The work comes from a person like me. I'm responsible for all of that, so I'll circle back with you and hold a meeting, and we'll deliberate on those types of concerns and the like, okay? All right.
Jack, do we have a timeline on that meeting?
That meeting would likely occur in the very immediate future, in the next few days, okay? Without a delay.
Perfect.
And I just want to thank Melissa and the staff for the work that they do, the work that you guys do, I know firsthand, is all of our teachers, I don't like to say them, but I know what you do on a daily basis, and thank you.
Could I also, just my concern is having some of the conversations, some of the deal could reflect on people and interpret in a certain way when it's set in a public setting. So I'm very good at meetings, I know Melissa knows that, and we have a very, very good relationship, so I think me, as a superintendent, circling back with people is the right course of action in order to then have change and the like, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I need to react, I need to, I, as a superintendent, have to react to that.
Yes, perfect.
Hey, just to follow up, so Jack, you're going to meet, and then will you circle back with the board? This is the first time we've heard about some of these things.
Yes, yeah. As I always do, I communicate with the board almost daily, absolutely no less than weekly, so yeah, that's a natural part of who I am and would continue to do, okay?
All right, thank you.
All right. Jackie Tiger Williams?
Melissa Height. All right, I think that'll work. All right. Hi, I'm Jackie Tiger Williams. I've been at Hurfield since 2006. First, I was there as a special education teacher, and now I'm a fourth-grade gen ed teacher. I'm here tonight to also share my concerns regarding inadequate space in our building and failure to meet the needs of our ERi program. So this year, we lost two autism self-contained classrooms, but we gained two ERi self-contained classrooms, as well as four kindergarten classrooms. Despite having no actual empty classrooms, we increased by an additional four full-size classrooms. Prior to this, Hurfield was already struggling to provide needed small-group spaces and office spaces for our staff. When our staff learned last school year we would have changed our self-contained special ed classes as well as the addition of kindergarten, we were proactive. We voiced our questions and concerns. Eventually, we were provided a meeting with administration where we were assured how smoothly the ERi program would run. Additionally, administration acknowledged that the modular learning unit may not be ready by September, but that there was a Plan B. Plan B was not shared at that time. Plan B has been in place all school year. Unfortunately, it does not provide a designated space for our elements program or our instrumental music programs. There are also really significant challenges with small-group teaching spaces. Simply put, when you need to pull a small group, good luck finding a spot to work that is quiet and isn't the hallway. Our concerns with adding a grade when we already lacked adequate space came to fruition, and the Hurfield staff is who's been dealing with them since the start. and the Hurfield staff is who's been dealing with them since the start of the school year. The ERI program was brought in in the midst of all these space concerns, and unfortunately, it wasn't adequately staffed at the start of the school year, and it hasn't been since. I'm not sure why the staffing challenge is surprising because we've had staffing shortages last year as well as prior to that. We've also had turnover this year due to injuries to staff as well as staff opting to transfer after a student injury. This is leaving the staff-to-student ratio higher than is safe when students go out of their ERI classroom for portions of their day, settings with different demands and stimuli where a child is more likely to become dysregulated. Over the last several years, maintaining a student's dignity has become more and more important to me. Yes, we were taught as education majors, you do not put a child's academic struggles on display, but what about emotional and behavioral struggles? It wasn't really covered as much, but it's just as important. When a child is struggling with behavior, I address those struggles privately as much as possible. That often means I pull them into the hallway where I can speak to them quietly while I'm still supervising my group from the doorway, or keeping that child after class for a moment to touch base. I don't put emotional or behavioral struggles on display because it's important that I maintain each child's dignity. But when a child is dysregulated in the hallway, their struggles are on display. The ERI classrooms are placed in the best possible spot given our current floor plan, but they're right next to our art class. That means six classes must pass the ERI classrooms twice per day where there's often a dysregulated child in the hallway. It's not maintaining dignity, it's putting their struggles on display. When a child is in one of the main corridors screaming, or sobbing, or laying on the ground, or using profane language, or shoving a staff member, or some combination of the above, it's not maintaining dignity, it's putting their struggles on display. When a child's wrapped in a mat for safety reasons in the hall, it's not maintaining their dignity, it is putting their struggles on display. A key component for success for every child in the ERI program is building relationships with their peers, but how are they supposed to do that when we as staff keep being forced to put their struggles on display because we lack the space and the staff to afford the kids the privacy they need and deserve when they're struggling? I'm grateful to my Hurfield colleagues who are making the best of a sustained, difficult situation. I am grateful for our phenomenal ERI teachers and staff who are relentlessly working for the benefit of the kids while working on a plane being built as they fly it, though I'm not really sure why they were ever put in that position. I'm grateful to Mrs. Delude, Dr. Switzer, Mrs. Pelosi, who have listened, acknowledged, and done what they can at the building level to improve the situation. Their creative thinking and advocating for us, it's been critical in getting us through an incredibly difficult, incredibly challenging school year. But these problems are bigger than what can be solved at the building level. We voiced our concerns to administration well before this school year even started. We've continued to do so. We've utilized several chains of command. People above the Hurfield building level made the decision to move forward with moving kindergarten and the ERI program to our building, and even expanded the ERI program in the process. Despite our existing space and staffing shortages, I am respectfully asking for significantly more support from above the building level so our students can have a safe, secure, and positive place to learn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Yeah.
As your superintendent, there are some things that our administrative team and our board collectively have done over time. When you settle, support staff contracts, and you improve the quality of remuneration and salary, that can make a difference over time for hiring folks where we have a shortage in the profession. When you bring closure, and the final piece of it is coming with our WTEA contract relative to staffing and the like. When you, some may or may not know, when you increase dollars for rates for our substitutes because we have a shortage, as we know, every day, we've had it for a period of time, and our board has recently done that, you may not have known that in terms of long-term subs, dollars for retired subs and the like, that could make a difference over time. So there are some real supports relative to change, not immediate, and I know it's not at the timeline that you would want, so I would suggest to you that we will continue to do that, lead that. And if I could, and this is just for those families of the ERI program, as the superintendent, if they're watching here tonight, and please take this in the manner that I'm saying it, I want you to all know that we care about our ERI program. Please, let's say that publicly to our families while we're shortage of staff. But I would not want, and I know, I would not want our ERI parents being worried about where we are and where my child is moving forward. So this is a collective team effort, right, that we have to solve collectively, and I know that's the mentality that you have over time, and those kinds of things relative to staffing and the like are burning in our profession. So yes, people above the building are the ones that ultimately can, you know, make differences to improve where we are. But I want our parents from our ERI programs to feel safe tonight and hear that from the superintendent because I think they need to when you're having a public discussion and then we have to interpret what this all means. Is that okay if I say that? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Tracy Coligan.
Hi, everybody. Before I begin, I'd like to state that my intention for speaking this evening is not in any way to point fingers. I have followed the proper chain of command and to communicate my concerns, all of my supervisors are aware of all of this, of the situation, and really, everybody has been over backwards. I'd also like to thank Mr. McGee and Mrs. Gerber for meeting with me this morning and validating my concerns. It is my hope, however, tonight that we can paint a clearer picture for you to work together towards a solution. My priority is always student advocacy. The Elementary Gifted and Talented Program is called ELEMENTS, as you've heard referred to Mrs. Tiger and Mrs. McNally both refer to it. I have taught in this capacity since December 2021, and before that was a longtime classroom teacher. Currently, I service more than 97 children K to 5 between my two schools, and there are many on deck in the primary grades I still intend to reach. In both schools, the classroom used was taken away and given to incoming kindergarten, which is understandable. In Hurfield School, however, I do not have a space that is mine. I share a tiny office with a counselor and teach in multiple other locations throughout the building. There's only enough space for a small number of students in my office, and the majority of my materials and belongings are still in an outside storage area and are not accessible while I'm teaching. Last spring, I was informed that I would no longer have a classroom until the cottages arrived in October 2022. As a result, I have modified my Hurfield schedule at least 10 times. It's more than that, 10 is what I counted, to make the best of the situation and coordinate with the teachers and students' schedules while making sure to communicate changes as clearly as possible. I make the best possible decisions and the most meaningful lessons I can under the circumstances. This impacts the children the most and is therefore a school-wide issue. Some of you toured Hurfield not too long ago and thanked me for doing such a good job. What you didn't see are the extra hours spent preparing these meaningful lessons and experiences to provide vital academic and emotional support, yes, to my students also. Children are trying to learn as custodians, other children, staff, et cetera, enter and use the spaces while I try to close gaps, build relationships, enrich, challenge, and teach. Despite my efforts, some of my students are still enduring significant stress. A Tuesday, one of my full Hurfield days, kind of goes like this. 9:45 to 10:45 cafeteria with grade three. 10:50 to 11:30 is my prep. 11:40 to 12:30, room 111, grade five. Mrs. Tiger offered her classroom for me there. 12:40 to 110, I'm back in my office with my current grade one students. This is my second group of first graders. 115 to 215, I'm back in the library to teach grade four. I get my lunch at 2:20. 3:00 to 3:40, grade two, group one students are back in my office, and then I meet with a second group of second graders on Fridays. It's confusing for staff and more importantly, for the children and not sustainable long-term. Clearly, we are in agreement that this isn't best practice, so I just ask that we remember the purpose of this institution, which is the children, and I want to be part of the solution. Thank you for your time.
I just want to thank the Hurfield family for getting up and speaking. Admittedly, I have two children that went through Hurfield and see a lot of amazing faces in front of me, whether you had my children directly or not, you all in some way touched them. So I think as a board, we're somewhat aware, certainly through emails that we've received of what's going on. I know Jack is actively working with Gretchen to have solutions in place. And to Jack's point about making sure our ERI families understand why we're talking about these issues in the spirit of transparency and moving forward, we have to talk about these issues because if we don't talk about them, then they quell and they build, and then frustration, and then we lose amazing staff members. So I'm really happy that you all came out. I hope everyone that has any concerns comes to the podium. Sometimes they're difficult to hear, but we need to hear them. So I do appreciate you all coming out. Thank you for having the courage to step up, and now the next step is for our administration to help with a solution and for the board to listen. So, thank you all. Callisto Terairelli.
My name is Calli Terairelli, and I am a current eighth grader at BHMS. I am also a member and the current president of FBLA. I also am a member of many other clubs, and in some, I also hold office. 16 of my classmates, as well as myself, have qualified again to compete at the state level in the FBLA competitions. Many of us do not have the privilege of available transportation at 6:00 in the morning on a week workday to represent our school and district against districts we have competed out, repeatedly outranked. We had eight members who ranked highly enough to compete at Nationals last year, only one attended Nationals. We have put in the work, and I think we deserve the opportunity to attend an event where we get to learn more about the business world and showcase our abilities and ideas through academic competitions. A few of us have even been named state and national officers or committee members, which is an amazing position to hold as a middle schooler in a high school and college-dominated organization. Because of the points I have stated previously, I am asking for assistance from the district to provide busing to the members of Bunker Hill, FBLA, so that we can attend states in Union, New Jersey, and my mother and advisor will follow up on that soon. And now, a question to the board. How do you feel that it reflects Washington Township for proven performers, performers, my apologies, to be absent from competitions we have previously won and for which we have state-level officers? Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I can answer that. I think it's unacceptable. It's a shame that you've made that and have that accomplishment, and now let's talk about how we can help, right? Is it okay, you said your mom, Jo T., do you want her to come up before we discuss? Okay, thank you. Very well spoken. Great job. Thank you. Jo T.
Sorry, I'm getting over a head cold. Can you guys hear me? Okay, good. First, Melissa and Hurfield staff, thank you. Thank you. So I am not here to talk about how many colors are on a flag in front of the school. I'm not here out of fear of my children learning about actual history. I'll leave the curriculum up to the experts. I'm not here to ban any books. I'm here to get support for our amazingly intelligent students. FBLA, which is Future Business Leaders of America, is grossly underfunded and unsupported by the board and the district. This is quite apparent, this was quite apparent when my then-seventh grader earned a space at FBLA Nationals last year and had zero assistance from the school, zero. Her father and I were largely unprepared for the several thousands of dollars it cost to get her to the national conference in Chicago. I was flabbergasted that there wasn't funding available for a national academic organization. I understand that we were privileged enough to be able to pay for it this time, but I never want another student that earned that position to miss out on such an incredible opportunity because of the lack of funding from the school or the ability to pay for it. This screams inequity and inequality. This says you are not good enough because you can't afford it. At this point, my daughter is eligible again this year for Nationals in Georgia, and we still do not have assistance from the district to make sure that she gets there. Which brings me to my next point, which Callisto brought up. New Jersey FBLA State Leadership Conference is on March 24th in Union, New Jersey, which is approximately an hour and a half to two hours away. Bunker Hill has an incredible 17 students that have earned their spots at states. Union, as I said, is nearly two hours away. Many students will not be able to attend because of lack of transportation. 6:00 AM on a weekday is early. This is one of those common questions that I'm sure everyone here asks. If this were a sports team, would they have buses? Of course they would. As far as I know, a bus would cost the district $3,000, I'm assuming because it's not a district bus, but that's what I was told. So what needs to happen for this to become reality for these kids that are busting their butts on academics? So I want to put this into perspective. It costs us more to get her to Nationals than it costs for one bus for 20 people. It's a lot of money. So what do we need to do to provide transportation to get these intelligent kids that have busted their tails all these years in middle school to get them to states? They deserve it. We need a bus. We need transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. What was the date on that? March 24th? What you got? Should we have discussion about what?
Janine Rector, is it okay for me to say we'll move mountains to find the money? Am I putting you in a tough spot?
Yes!
No pressure. It's March 24th. So let's talk about follow-up. We did just find out about this on Friday, so no one said no. I just want to make that clear, and we will make it happen.
Yeah, and we'll follow up with, you know, the administrative team, Mr. Distillio and Greg, so, I mean, how do I say no to that? Come on. So, yeah.
We don't.
And then, looking, moving forward, I'm very good with co-curricular. Yes, Gabriel Renzetti, Sean Guyverston, am I good with co-curricular? All right, so then, you know, there's something, a need, that I'm aware of now, so.
Perfect. All right.
Hey, we made it happen one time earlier. We had a little bit of a shortage earlier in the fall, I think, with a high school event, and we made it happen, so I would think with my BA sitting next to me in public, we can make that happen, okay? Thank you. We'll follow up.
So, Calli, you'll have to come back and report back and let us know how you all did. Okay, fair. Good luck. All right. Congratulations. All right. Amanda Phillips.
I'm just here just to spread some happiness, I'm a public speaker. I wanted to give a shout-out to all the Grenlock support staff. They really deserve it. They work so amazingly every day. I'm so thankful for working here, for working at school, every day, smiles. And a shout-out to all the teachers at Grenlock, the support staff, the special service, the administration, ensuring we have an amazing culture. We have an amazing culture. I have no complaints. It is honestly a pleasure to go to work every day, and I think that we just need to hear a little bit of that. So, that's all, and thank you, support staff in the district.
Thank you. Thank you. Natalie Berry.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to say congratulations to Calli for the FBLA. I know last year, yes, you were selected and you went to Chicago. That's a great accomplishment, and continue to do that. I'm here to talk, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but hearing about the FBLA, I was at the DECA competition today in Atlantic City judging, and there were thousands of students there. It was such a great opportunity for these students. I know somebody had mentioned, we talk about our sports. We're always talking and focusing on our sports.
And we want to, we want to train these students and we also want to give them the opportunity to be able to start in the middle school level, even, you know, later elementary. But I do think that, you know, hopefully for the middle school, we can kind of come up with something. I know there's other academia programs that we can maybe discuss and see if there's any other opportunities that we can, we can give these students. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. So Natalie, I'll just comment real quickly. Under new business, we're going to talk a little bit about how we can better report out about all things across the district so we can capture it. So thank you for leading us in that, in that direction already. I don't have any additional yellow cards, so a motion to close to the public?
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion to approve the report of the superintendent, items one through four. So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I don't think I need to wrap. Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, under policy, motion to approve policies, items number one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, under policy, motion to approve policies, items number one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, moving to instruction and curriculum, motion to approve item number one.
So moved.
Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, under policy, motion to approve policies, items number one through nine.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Under student activities, motion to approve items one through five.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Under human resources, motion to approve items one through thirty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Lindsey?
Abstain from item one under human resources, initials S.L.
And yes to the rest.
Yes, for the rest.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, moving to finance, motion to approve items number one through twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Had a couple of questions. M6, that amount with ESS, that was, just want to make clear, you got back to me on that, that's what, five weeks?
Any other discussion? No? Okay, anybody else? All right, roll call. Oops, sorry. Go ahead, Sean.
Yeah, just a quick question under item twenty-two. Did Verizon not put a bid in for our fiber optic lease? Did they not put a bid in at all?
This particular item is bid renewal, so last year it was bid for a possible renewal for five years. It was bid for a five-year contract. So I could look that up at another time. I don't remember if they.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, just on the discussion, which items are we going to be?
One through twenty-six.
One through twenty-six, right? Okay.
Okay, seeing that, let's go, roll call on these items. Roll call.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Jean, can I have items twenty-seven? Motion to approve items number twenty-seven through thirty. I'm sorry, twenty-seven as amended through thirty.
Just read the amendment, read the amendments off clearly.
Okay. The amendment is the approval to reject the bid for Herefield Elementary School TCU site improvements and electrical improvement bids being in excess of budget amounts.
That's item forty-seven.
And that's item number twenty-seven. We're voting on twenty-seven through thirty.
Do we have discussion or we need a motion to?
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
So just on, on the amendment, I just don't want anybody to think we don't support moving toward union.
I'm not letting that go.
We just need another bid.
Great answer.
Yes. Okay, any other, thank you, Scott. Thank you for that. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
No to twenty-seven as amended and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Gallinero?
No to twenty-seven as amended and yes to twenty-eight through thirty.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
No to number twenty-seven as amended and yes to the rest.
Mrs. Chilla?
No to twenty-seven, yes to the rest.
Did you mean to reject, vote to reject?
To reject.
Oh, you just said no, but so you voted yes.
Okay, reject number two.
You just voted yes to approve the resolutions you just read. Otherwise, it was a no to that and the vote would not, the rejection would not have passed.
Okay, just tell me what to say. I'm a negative.
So you're approving twenty-seven through thirty, yes to approve twenty-seven through almost thirty.
Okay, yes to approve number twenty-seven through thirty. Perfect. Correct, yes. That was fun. All right. Sorry, we need to torture Jim. Okay, so, let's move to special education. All right, that was easy. Motion to approve special education, items one through thirteen.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Done, all right, roll call.
Yes.
Mrs. Gallinero?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsey?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Okay, we are going to move to new business. New business from the board.
She's saying there's nothing with negotiations, obviously.
Yeah, there's nothing new with negotiations, so that's why I'm skipping over it. Right. Let's go to new business on the board.
So, I said one item. I think we've talked about it before and I know, Jack, you support this, so I just want to make sure we get on the record of looking at, you know, housing plan for September. You know, we're hearing about the crowding in certain places, so that's definitely something that we want to get on the agenda to be done. And I know you have it on your radar, so I want to make sure.
Yes, yeah, our district absolutely needs to look at that, yes, in more ways than one, for sure. That's why it's something we have in conversations about that goes beyond just the modular unit at Herefield. Certainly, it's a time since the last time we've done something, seven years ago, we absolutely have to look at that. That's a, I think, a burning issue and I welcome our new superintendent to, I'll work on it and we'll do that, but that is absolutely something and we talked about that, you know, we talked about it in committee. Gretchen Gerber very much has some very strong, you know, thoughts in terms of what we need to do, so it's initiative whose time has come, yes, yes. So I want to validate that.
Okay. Yes, so, okay, so this is what I was speaking to when Natalie came up. You know, I just wanted to have a conversation with the board to, are you okay?
I want to do one thing for our dear student representative, if I could just report out.
Oh, okay.
Could I do that?
Sure.
Just so people understand, we're going to start to have a process of reporting out. Mr. Anderson, who I've spoken to, will have you in and that vehicle that we talked about, you know, you know, this guy makes things happen, right? No question about it. Email address that we're looking to have separate from your student email address, Joe Kay, our IT director, going to bring that to me in terms of what that looks like so we can push that out and Ray can let the faculty, or the student body know as well as the date for the next superintendent's cabinet. He'll be sitting up here and joining our group, so we'll let you know that. All those things, done, 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 all coming to make sure that that becomes a reality, okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it. Are we also scheduling the meeting to talk about a student forum or another way of accessing, having access to report out for the meetings? Are we still going to schedule that meeting?
Yes.
All right.
Got it.
I'll email you.
I see Mr. Anderson in the back shaking his head yes, so, okay.
Hey, this man gets things done too. Damn.
Yes.
No messing around. All right. I just thought that'd be nice to hear, so your, the student body can hear the things we talked about, to upgrade, to expand your position in terms of what we can do in terms of interacting, okay?
Perfect. Okay, so, I just wanted to talk about, with the full board, about how we get more involved in terms of interacting with the schools and what I mean by that in a very compliant way. So, when I was in the board previously, we had board liaisons to schools and I wanted to have a conversation about it because I do believe that at times it may have morphed into something that was not compliant. So I think if we could put some parameters around doing that again, there are so many amazing things happening throughout the district and for us as a board to not attend, it's just, we're not involved. We don't see all the great things. So I just wanted to kind of talk to the board to get your sense. We can certainly follow up. I know we're meeting next week, just to kind of figure out what that looks like. But really, the spirit of it was that we all took a school or two and we just kind of, you know, got together calendars to understand what's currently on there, what can we attend, how can we support, to Natalie's point, more than just the athletic programs, that's really important, obviously. We have a lot of phenomenal things going on throughout the district. Today, I had the good fortune and invitation to, to go to Read Across America at Grenlock, which was awesome. And it triggered something immediately, like, I wish everyone had a chance to do that at every school to visit. So I think it's important, I think we just have to be careful that we're not violating any ethics by becoming someone where we walk into the school and start having conversation with teachers and administrators and, so what's going on here? Like, what, it's not a good look for us, so we do have to keep it to going to events, but I just wanted to kind of throw it out and have a little bit of a discussion of, are you for it? Is it something you think you want to do? I know we're all super busy, but I also know that in talking with everyone, that there's a desire to be able to go to some of these events, to be able to support our students, our teachers. So if you, I just want to open it up and get your thoughts.
Can I just add to it? As a retired teacher, I always invited board members into the classroom, especially when there was something special going on. I too am reading Across America at GTUC. And also, I just got an invite for Junior Achievement at Burgess, which is on Friday, March 10th. So, you know, invite us, we'll come. You know, if we can make arrangements to get there, I know, you know, some of us have difficulty with work schedules, but if we know ahead of time, we can rearrange it. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to also be able to, you know, share all the wins of all the things that we do. I mean, we all have, some of us have kids that do certain things, so I'll know about certain things because of my kids and Kathleen and, you know, everyone else, Carol, but if we can somehow find a way to be able to celebrate everything all the schools do and just kind of do a quick shout-out for academic sports, kindness, anything like that, so I think that would be just terrific to be able to do that.
Okay, just want to add one more thing for a plug for the Mama Mia Show, which is coming up in March, I think it's the 16th, 17th, 18th, if I'm not mistaken. Correct, so buy your tickets and get there.
Angelina will be available for autographs after.
Anybody else? Okay. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I saw Elaine will send out, you know, different events that are going on and there was the career fair at some of the middle schools. I've signed up for at least one and will try to make any that I can, so I think that's a great way we can get involved.
Awesome. I do think we need, and we've talked about this before, to take a close look at the calendar from an equity perspective and then also just from a perspective of making sure that the different activities aren't happening at the same time, because a lot of times we've seen it through our own students that, that certain events are happening at the same time and we can't necessarily attend something that would be good for a board member to be able to attend, so. a board member to be able to attend. So, and I know that's hard because with so many schools in the district, you know, but I think it's something we have to put a lot of effort and, and, you know, be really intentional when we look at it.
Agreed, agreed. Anybody else? Okay. All right, motion to open to the public for second public comment. So moved.
Second.
All right, we are open. I have a card in front of me, Mary Bem.
Hi, good evening. Congratulations and welcome, Dr. Hibbs. You got your hands full here, but they're all really working really hard. I just, I guess we have to throw this out there, listening tonight to these teachers who have come in to speak, I guess it was about three years ago maybe, that there was the big push for the kindergarten and it's not this board particularly, but this is where the boards really need to work and somebody needs to work with them, because it's a great idea to push for pre-K, I get that, but we don't have the school space for that. We're, we're talking getting trailers to house students. We've gone through this before. It's just a shame that we don't plan ahead in our district. So I'm hoping that maybe we can do some of that. I blame it on the administration who pushed forward with it. There were other ways that perhaps we could have handled it. There's a lot of great pre-Ks in this district that maybe we could have funded or supported the children that way, but now we're listening and we're be, we're disrupting the other students in the district to house pre-K and it hasn't even started yet. And, and there are people out there who are upset they didn't make the cut or they didn't get in it. So it's just, I feel like it's kind of, it's, it's going to grow another head, but I just wanted to throw that out there. You know, I know it's not this board, but it is this administration. They're the same people. I get it. It's important pre-K. I did it for years. I'm not diminishing that, but we don't have the space. So just food for thought. I don't know where you go with that. Somebody, you know, had poor decision making. Thanks.
Thanks, Mary.
Carol, does anybody want to, I don't know if Jack or anybody wants to address that, just like the plan of-
Sure.
-some of the outreach we're doing on pre-K to find space and stuff like that? I know Gretchen's putting a lot of work into that, right?
Yes, significant work relative to expanding the program beyond our borders with entities outside the district as well, as you know, creating a room from where we are with our childcare program at the high school of building that capacity as well for our students. So yes, that's a, and, and part of the plan relative to where you need to be in X amount of years is to equal, let's say, your first grade, second grade class in terms of the numbers that equal to your third and fourth grades. So you have to show that continual progress every year. That's part of the requirements of the grant. It's a tremendous amount of work, very, very labor intensive for Gretchen and our staff, but those efforts have to be made as part of the sustaining that, that grant from year to year. So within five years, you have to equal that universe. They call it the universe, which is like 90% of what that population would be like of a first grade class. Yes. It's a heavy lift. Heavy lift. Yep.
Okay. Patricia Klein?
Good evening, everyone. I just had a couple of questions on the finance section in the agenda, number 30 for the ESER funds. It says that to amend the grant to reallocate the spent funds, unspent funds. I just wanted to know, what are the unspent funds? How much is it? And has it been allocated? It says the total grant was $4 million, over little over $4 million. So how much hasn't been spent and has it been allocated? And if it hasn't been allocated, let me get back to my little notes. I think it could be used and should be used for the FBLA, which we just talked about, the Future Business Leaders of America, helping them get to where they need to go. So that is a suggestion. I'm really shocked. I'm pretty emotional right now about what's going on. I am so surprised. This is the first time, and I've been coming to the meetings for over two years now, and this is the first time I've heard this about the space concern. I don't know why. Why hasn't someone mentioned it? Why wasn't it brought to the board prior to tonight? I know there are, there's a process and I know you have to go up through the commands of the chain of command, but two years now, I've been here and I haven't heard anything about it. I'm really upset. And the reason I'm also upset, because a lot of people argue with me on Facebook, yes, they do, that Washington Township is wonderful. And it is, but it's not flawless. And they make it seem like that it's flawless, but tonight I see some things that we need to improve in. And I'm really shocked at this and I hope that it works out well. I had a niece, this is my second go around coming back to Washington Township, but in the eighties, I had a niece that attended that school and I'm really just shocked as to what is happening over there. And I hope that you will, it will be rectified. And I'm sure it will be rectified, yeah. So please continue to come and all those who have concerns, come to the board and express your concerns, because we've really, I'm a fighter. I'm a fighter for right. So if I don't know that these things are happening, I can't fight for you. I want to fight for you. Thank you.
Jeanine, Jeanine, you'll do ESER. Let me do, can I do the first one? Patricia, Jeanine's going to talk about the ESER part and parcel in terms of the need relative to- Sorry, Jeanine's going to speak to the balance funds that you were looking for, right? Mobile unit-
I'm sorry.
At Herfill, the one you've heard tonight. Original plan in terms of where we were going, October, and Jeanine, correct me if I'm wrong, that was going to land early part of the school year. That's what the expectation was of our staff. And then with the industry, not so much. So now it's May, March 1 tomorrow and, you know, that has not materialized, although it's being built off-site in the light, so that, that, that causes that overcrowding to be exacerbated because it continues and it continues through November and December and January and February. Here we are, March 1. So the worry is realized through the lack of, of seeing something that should have been there from the original thought. I wasn't here last spring, early fall, didn't happen, okay? So industry is where they are. There are some times where things are taking seven months, six months, and that, which is very frustrating in terms of that, okay?
Okay.
As far as the ESER funding, when we apply for the grant, we do, all the funds are allocated. So once we got the allocation right from the get-go, we have to plan out how we're going to spend it and, and talk about it and put it in account numbers. Then as we move through, through time, because this is a multi-year grant, as things happen, like, we set aside a certain amount of money for summer school and then summer school is over and we have funds left, we can repurpose them for something else. It could be summer school for the following year, it could be academic recovery, whatever it is, we then have to, from time to time, amend the grant with the state just so they know our new priorities. So again, right from the very beginning and every time we amend, the funds are always allocated for a specific plan. As we spend them, we draw them down from the state and as we repurpose them, we file another amendment. As far as the balances, we still have about $1.6 million left and we're allowed to spend those through September of 2024, I believe.
So there was no allocation?
Can't have a back and forth. Can't have a back and forth.
I know, but she was going to answer the 30, number 30.
We can't have a back and forth. If you have a question, then answer the question, but you can't have a back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, so I think the, the number that's on the agenda is the original amount of the grant. Again, what we have left is what I reported. And the amendment simply consists of leftover funds from summer school is now going to be used for something else. Okay.
Jeanine, you couldn't use that for something like the Future Business Leaders, right? I mean, it's very restricted on what you can do, right?
Yeah, it is, because even though it's, it's supposed to be COVID-related, so we just try to be careful with what you're going to use it for, because, you know, they eventually audit these programs and come in and, you know, you could get somebody that doesn't agree with your opinion, so.
And all grants dictate very specifically what and how you can use the money and you have to write it down, then they'll come and check. So it's not, it sounds, it's a great solution, but it just unfortunately doesn't always work like that.
And for our FBLA, I don't know if they're still here, you know, certainly tonight you get the attention. We're in budget season and certainly we can make a item relative to a budget attached to that particular group or that particular school secondary level to make that be something that happens now and then is a perpetual item, so we know that, that, that group of students has that opportunity every year. And there's never, never doubt that if we qualify, we're going, no matter, no matter how many students qualify. That's an easy, that's an easy thing to do, because now's the time to do it, right? There you go.
So just to be clear, in case the public may be confused that's watching, we've already committed to the FBLA, March 24th, so we don't have to find the funds. Jeanine's got it and that's, we're going to commit to it. So Ms. Watson?
You have enough, you should have enough money and this, this school district is very rich. And the problem is, is that you're going to leave out a lot of preschoolers that are going to need that preschool, because what happens is, they're going to get left out. Then they're going to go to kindergarten, they're going to be slow. Then you're going to have disabilities that are technically not a disability, but a way that you stifle young children by not giving them the opportunity from the beginning to be able to learn and to be able to learn. And to be able to learn the basics at the right time in their lives. Some kids now, if they go to private school, can read by the time they are in kindergarten. And so you're going to stop a lot of children from having that jump start that is needed for kindergarten, because kindergarten isn't like when, when it was in my day. And so a lot of these children are going to get left out. I remember when you had the money for tutoring, you were very selective. You picked and choose who you would actually give tutoring to. And you had the funding and you had the money set aside, but you were very selective in who you would actually give to. And I would like to see a list in the lottery with a, maybe a ratio of who is actually being able to have preschool. What is their socioeconomic status? What is their race? So that we can know who you're actually giving that preschool that is very needed in the school district. And it was needed 20 years ago. That was one of my arguments here. And full-time kindergarten, one of my arguments here. And now you're doing it, what, 20 years later? What's going on here? These children are advanced. They have to, they have to be, they have to catch up with China, Japan, Korea, I mean, everybody. Preschool is important. And yet, you're not doing it for every student in this school district. What's wrong with you? This, we all have money. Everybody here have a lot of money. You're going to deny the access to little kids. Some parents who come here have nothing, but they have a house in Washington Township. They barely eat, so their kids can come to Washington Township to learn. And you're going to deny some of those people the opportunity for their children to have a, a very good education. I'm not going to say great, but at least a fair and decent American education, because that's what's going to happen. Then what's going to happen by the time they get to the sixth, let's say the second grade, you're going to say they're too slow. Then you're going to try to classify. Classification costs more money. Then if you start from the beginning, why don't we stop the problems in the beginning? Then we don't have the problems later on. Okay. That seems funny to some of you, but this is a rich community. It's always been a rich community. And this is also a very well-educated community. It's not like most of the people here have degrees. And all of you have PhD degrees. And you know that that is very important for those young children to get an excellent start. That's all I really have to say. But then I'm going to break it down, because with me, I'm here because you don't fit, treat every child here equally or fair. And you never have and it's not getting better. And some people, I don't have Facebook, I'm not on Twitter, I'm not on Instagram. You see what I'm saying? I'm not here so that people will say and look at me in a certain way. I'm here because the passion about the education of the children in the community that I'm a part of should be number one. It always have been. And I know the treatment, mass incarceration is taking young brothers out of what I call the breeding pool, so they don't, that they don't become educated enough to be able to live in Washington Township. And that's exactly what you're doing, because you're going to pick and choose who you like. Like, you like her, but you don't like me. I don't care. But it shouldn't be that you pick and choose, because that's what's going to happen. Because that's what I've seen for 20 years here, that you pick and choose who you like, who's better. Everybody's a child of God. We're all good. And we deserve to have fair and equal in America.
Thank you, Ms. Watson.
Okay. Just for, for the record, relative to the work that's being done, Gretchen, your leadership, your supervisors, Christina Cox, our principal of Grenlock Terrex and the work that our staff is doing over there with, the grant program is exceptional and that group, and I know that we have to continue to build our capacity and then Caleb Berry working with Gretchen in terms of what we're going to be able to do to capture a room at the high school, so that program and those kids are getting an outstanding program, okay? Make sure we know that.
I believe it, yes.
Okay.
All right, motion to close to the public? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, thanks, everyone.